I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Okay, first item on the agenda, item number three, public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Asking one last time, no public comment. We'll move on to item number four. Approved minutes of the April 7, 2015 regular meeting. Can I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda, item number five, approved minutes from the April 7, 2015 special town meeting. Can I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda, item number six, approved minutes from the April 7, 2015 public hearing. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item is item number seven, approved minutes from the April 14, 2015 special meeting. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Len, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The cheer votes aye, motion passes four zero one. Please note Nicole's abstention. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, first selectman's report. As a reminder, the annual town meeting on the budget will be held on Thursday night at 7:00 PM at Seymour High School. If we do not have a quorum, the Board of Selectmen will meet to officially move the budget to referendum vote. In your packets is the agenda that has been filed in case that is needed. Town of Seymour budget referendum will be held on Thursday, April 30th, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Seymour Community Center. I'm asking all residents to please come out and vote on this very important issue. Code red did go out today to announce that information. It was also put out on Facebook and the Internet. Our new Director of Community Service, Marion McNallys, has officially started. She's been spending the last two weeks reviewing structure and process for the new department. She has started to prepare a series of recommendations that she will present initially to Tony and myself, and then to the Board of Selectmen. I expect that to be done in late May or early June. I presented a state of the town address to the Valley Chamber of Commerce members. During the presentation, I was able to highlight Seymour's steady improvement in our overall financials and the direction we are heading and our expectations for 2015 and beyond. I met with Town Council Rich Paterno and Town Engineer Jim Gallagher to finalize the RFQ for the WPCA bid process. We expect the RFQ to go out in the next week or so and to be out for about three to four weeks. After review of submissions, we will narrow the potential bidders based on their qualification and move forward to the next phase. Public Works continues to work on the roads in Seymour. The brutal winter has caused much more damage than we have seen in the past. Though we've made strides in the last two years with our new proactive road program, it has exposed our lack of any true road repair or maintenance program for many years. Asphalt plants are now open, so we were able to use a more permanent solution with fixing potholes in roads such as robbing and rimming. Major road construction will begin in the next few weeks and we will continue through the summer into late August. In total, we are projected to completely redo 43 roads. Later tonight, we will award the first of six bids for all of this work. As we draw closer to the end of fiscal year, we are finalizing our plans to close out the 2015 budget. At this point, we are projecting a small surplus, but we'll continue to monitor these numbers on a daily basis to make sure we're able to hit all of our projected targets. The Seymour Neighborhood Sweeps Program will officially begin on Monday, April 27. Director of Operations Tony Caserta, Public Works Director Dennis Rosen, and I will drive every street in Seymour over a four-day period and catalog every pothole, road crack, sidewalk issue, and overall general state of each area. All this information will then be compiled and used to create a master plan for not only repair, but ongoing maintenance. During this time, we will also be looking at litter conditions and potential blight situations. This process will happen once a quarter to allow us to review and make updates. Rory will be setting up a spot on the website to allow residents to report in updates as they see things. These reports will come directly to my office to allow for better tracking and accountability. We expect to have more on this program in the coming weeks, once we finish the initial sweep of each of the neighborhoods. So with that, that closes the first selectman's report. We'll move on to item number nine, award bid for road work. You should have just each been handed a small packet. The first is a letter regarding 2014 Road Construction Program Contract Number Three. Dear Mr. Miller, Nafis and Young opened bids on the reference project on Monday, April 20th, 2015. Three bids were received as follows. Cochula Paving Incorporated, $833,125. A&amp;J Construction, $864,782.25. And Complete Construction, $1,099,450. We have reviewed the bids and find that they were mathematically correct and proper bid bonds accompanied each bid. The low bidder is deemed responsible and qualified, as they have completed similar work for the Town of Seymour in the past. Therefore, Nafis and Young recommends that the Town of Seymour award the bid for the 2014 Road Reconstruction Program Contract Three, the Cochula Paving Incorporated, in the amount of $833,125. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me on my cell or at my office. Sincerely, James H. Gallagher, Nafis and Young Engineers Incorporated. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion that we award 2014 Road Reconstruction Program Contract Number Three, the Cochula Paving Incorporated, in an amount of $833,125, as recommended by Town Engineer Jim Gallagher. Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Under discussion, also as part of the packet that Jim handed, you can see a breakdown of the different contracts and in the actual order that they are going to go. The one contract that is not showing on here is contract number six, which is drainage piping. So that will be awarded separately. Jim is projecting that with us awarding this bid tonight, that the contractor will be able to break ground at some point in mid-May. And the process will be ongoing for the 43 roads until some point in late August or early September. Any questions on any of this?
Yeah. I really don't have a good feeling about Cochula. Cochula, if you remember, did Derby Avenue.
Okay.
Derby Avenue was the state project or the era project, and they took much longer than they should have. They left all the sewer covers, manhole covers, exposed for long enough. And I got phone calls every day about that project being done. I don't, I just can't support giving them the contract for the work they did down there. It took them too long and many, many complaints, even with aprons being done along Derby Avenue, so.
When was that done?
Four years ago.
That was, yeah, 2010, finally.
That's the new section in front of.
I don't know of any other work that they've done. If they didn't do any other work during my administration, I don't know of any other work they did.
No, because it was A&amp;J that did everything over on Pat Nav. I believe it was A&amp;J. Comments? Anyone else?
Yeah, with regard to Paul's comments, I remember that distinctly because I drove that stretch of road every day. Is there anything that we can put into the contract that stipulates certain parameters that would avoid such a delay? I mean, I remember the manhole covers being exposed for a heck of a long time. I mean, I don't know if that's already been covered in the contract. I mean, how is it written up?
We haven't gotten to the contract as of yet. It was just the bid part. Brian, any thoughts?
Just to ensure that our expectations aren't totally blown out of the water.
Does that make you feel more comfortable, Paul, or?
A little bit, but.
What about holding them to it?
I mean, Dennis may be able to kind of, I don't know if you wanted to or not. I don't know if you recall Derby Avenue when Cochula was doing that. We had a lot of issues with that.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns?
Paul, any additional thought?
No, that's it. So Brian, our options, we can take Town Engineer's recommendation, or if the group didn't feel comfortable, we could move to A&amp;J Construction. In your professional opinion, and noting Paul's very valid concerns, you feel that there's things that we can do in the contract to hold them accountable?
Is that a common addition in these types of contracts?
Far too long. Every time you had rain, it just.
It was over a month, a couple of weeks.
The whole project should have taken about six weeks to complete, and it took them about three months to complete it. I'm guessing they probably had other jobs, but yeah, Dennis has got something there.
And Paul, I don't remember back then. Did Cochula do, were they responsible for everything, or were they just responsible for a piece? Was there anything that held them up? They did everything?
Yeah, they didn't farm anything up.
Because I know one of the issue, I guess, issues when we did the roads over on Pat Nav was one person didn't do all of the work. That's not going to be the case. Everything from the milling to the paving, to the curb cuts, to the driveway aprons, everything's going to be done by one contractor.
What kind of a bid bond or performance bond do we have with this?
Hold on a second. Correct.
Cochula or A&amp;J?
All of these contracts are start to finish. They're responsible for everything. Correct. We piecemealed it ourselves. We kind of GC'd it to save money. These guys, it's flat out, you do everything on these streets. About 30 grand, 31 grand. It's about 4 percent. A&amp;J? You know, I've driven those roads a bunch of times. I keep checking on them, and you know, knock on wood, no issues. But again, we have written in the year-long period from substantial completion to protect the road. Was that an isolated issue? I know. But Jim, obviously Jim was involved in the project?
Again, what kind of a bid bond or performance bond or anything like that do they have for this project?
Whatever was put into the bid itself, off the top of my head, I don't know, but I would assume it's for the contract amount, correct? At the minimum.
Yeah.
So, so it'd be for 830-plus thousand. I mean, we have a couple of options. If there's some hesitation, then what we can do is we can refile the agenda for Thursday night. We can ask Jim to meet us at the high school, and we can have that conversation with him. Or if we're not comfortable, then we just, we vote now. But if there's some hesitation, I think we should probably wait then until Thursday, if that's.
Yes.
Everybody's okay with that? Let Jim come in and have the conversation? Would that make you feel?
I feel better about that.
Better about that, okay.
I moved the tables to Thursday's.
Okay, so we have to withdraw the two original motions, correct?
I withdraw my original motion.
So you can make a motion on the postponed?
Okay. Okay. I'll withdraw my withdrawal.
All right, so Len's withdrawing his withdrawal.
I moved that we postponed it to.
Thursday, 23rd.
Thursday, 23rd.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes five zero. Rory, can you refile the agenda for Thursday, please? Okay, item number 10. Action Aloua Special Town Meeting Regarding Appropriated $2 Million for Design and Construct of an Artificial Turf Athletic Field and Grandstand at the Seymour High School, AKA Project CSAP 2015-17 and Related Improvements and Amenities to be Funded in Part by an Estimated $1,895,000 in Grants from the State of Connecticut DEEP. Hold on, no, that was just, I just have to read the motion.
Are you done? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem. Okay, so that was just the agenda item. Okay. All right, so since we did not have a quorum for the town meeting, I will read the resolution as presented by Bond Counsel Doug Gillette. Resolve that the Town of Seymour appropriate $2 Million for Costs With Respect to Design and Construct of an Artificial Turf Athletic Field and Grandstand at Seymour High School, also known as Project CSAP 2015-07, and Improvements and Amenities Related There Too, to be funded in part by an estimated $1,895,000 in Grants from the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and the remainder from unencumbered general fund balance. The appropriation may be spent for design, construction, acquisition, and installation costs, related equipment, materials, consultant, and engineering fees, and other expenses related to the project. The Board of Selectmen is authorized to determine the scope and particulars of the project and to reduce or modify the project, and the entire appropriation may be expended on the project as so reduced or modified. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as read? Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Under discussion. Again, I'm going to state this, since we have three members of the turf committee present, the committee is not to go over $1,895,000. The additional amount is there in an emergency situation. If we needed to go $5,000 over, $10,000 over, for whatever reason, we would not have to go back through this entire process again. This builds us a little cushion. Again, I am strongly encouraging the board to spend the $1,895,000 that was given to us by the State of Connecticut.
No worries there.
We will do our best.
We'll do our best, so. Okay, with that, if there's any other, no other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The cheer votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 12, excuse me, item number 11, I apologize. Discussion Take Possible Action Regarding Low-CIP Funding. Okay, we have three requests, or two requests, excuse me, with regards to low-CIP funding, and then one additional request for potential low-CIP funding. So we're going to start with the first letter. This is to myself, from Dennis Rosen, Public Works Director, regarding Remen Street. The Seymour Public Works Department is requesting the Board of Selectmen to authorize $10,000 in local capital investment program, low-CIP money, to perform necessary road repairs on Remen Street. The funds will be utilized for asphalt to temporarily repair many areas of Remen Street, so vehicles can travel in a safe manner. This repair is in anticipation of a complete road reconstruction program, which will be done in the spring of 2016. All necessary labor will be supplied by the Public Works Department, regards, Dennis Rosen. Okay, so before we discuss, can I have a motion to approve $10,000 in low-CIP funds for the necessary road repairs on Remen Street?
So move, move.
Motion by Len, second by Paul. Under discussion. As we know, this project was started under Paul?
Leave that.
When?
Ancient history.
Yeah. Our anticipation was that we would be out to bid and that this work would be done spring, summertime. We actually designed our road program around Remen Street being done. Because of some, depending on who you ask, whose finger they want to point at, we will not be going out to bid on this project until the fall of 2015. Work to be done in the spring of 2016. Even if we could move the bar and make this process faster, the road is just in dismal, dismal shape, and that is a major connector from '67 to '42. If you've driven it, you fully understand. So I asked Dennis if he could put together some numbers of what we can do for the most inexpensive temporary repair to get us to next spring. We'll be putting down about 100 tons of asphalt. We'll be rolling it, so we'll be filling in all of the potholes and things like that, and that should hold us over until next springtime. Okay, so that's where we stand on that. Any questions to me or to Dennis with regards to this?
Just a point of clarification. I mean, it's been pushed back and pushed back, obviously, for a number of years now. And now we're anticipating spring of 2016. Is there any reason why we should actually bank on that date or on that timeframe? Or is there a possibility this could get pushed again?
I don't think it will get pushed again. All the work has been completed by DeCarlo and Doll, it's now up in the hands of the state. But we asked for some changes to things, which, of course, resets the clock on everything. And you know, once it gets up to DOT, it has to go from engineer one, to engineer two, to engineer three, all the way up to engineer six. And God forbid engineer four makes a change, it has to go all the way back to one and start all over again. So our state delegation is very aware. They've been actively pushing this to try to get this through. Unfortunately, now it's just in the hands of the engineers, speaking to the guys at DeCarlo and Doll. They said, at best, if we really jam this through, maybe four months. So now we're in fall time bidding and trying to do the road work. It may not at that point be worth taking the chance. We might be better off waiting until the spring anyway, so.
The long and short of it, it's out of our hands. We've done everything we can to.
Yeah. You know, and like I said, our state delegation's been very helpful pushing on this, but it's just a matter of engineers doing what engineers do. So. Dennis, anything you want to add? Okay, and this, we did have some money earmarked in low-CIP for this. So this is though we didn't, we hoped we would not have to use it when we were putting low-CIP budgeting together back in the late fall, early winter. We had put some money in just in case, so.
I kind of echo Len's concerns, because we don't want to have to go through another winter with that. And we can get through one, and we don't want to have to go through a second one.
No. I mean, we'll know by late summer where this stands, because they should be ready to go out to bid.
Okay.
So. Okay, if there's no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next request, again, to myself, from Dennis. The Seymour Public Works Department is requesting the Board of Selectmen to authorize $20,000 in local capital investment program money to revise the strand parking lot to add an additional 15 parking spaces, in addition to allow the Public Works Department to maintain the parking lot adequately. The cost involved will be for relocation of a utility pole, asphalt for parking area, asphalt curbing, handicap ramp, sidewalk material, cement curbing, parking lot ceiling, vehicle stops, and line painting. All labor will be supplied by the Seymour Public Works Department. The map, and remember we saw the map? Mike Orville came in and presented it to us. We were all comfortable with the design of the map. If you recall, we did not want to take this project on until the Fish Bypass Parking Lot was fully up and running and operational. That has been done. As you can see, everybody has a copy of the map in front of them. This will turn the strand parking lot into 46 spaces. There will be no curbing in the middle, so this will allow Public Works to better maintain the parking lot, whether it be snow plowing or street sweeping. The only thing that will not be done by Public Works will be the moving of the telephone pole. We're about $5,000 or $6,000 more than we had anticipated for the project because of the moving of the telephone pole. We've had conversations with Mark Massaro and John O'Toole with regards to that, so they are working on getting that set up. So once CLNP is ready to go to move the pole, we will schedule the project around that, assuming that the board is comfortable with the decision to use low-CIP money for this. Dennis, anything you want to add? Again, like we discussed, it'll dead-end down on the bottom, and then there'll be an entranceway over by the diner, entrance and exit by the diner, entrance and exit over by the strand. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes five zero. And then the last piece, and I asked Dennis to include this, more for informational at this point. An issue has been raised by the residents of Maiden Lane. That information has gone to the Board of Public Works. They in turn asked Dennis to bring that attention, to my attention as well, to this board's attention. Dennis has included some pictures which he took. Dennis will be reviewing with Town Engineer Jim Gallagher over the next few days. I've asked them to come with some conceptual ideas to us for our first meeting in May, but I'll read the letter that's attached. The Seymour Public Works Department, along with the Public Works Board, has recognized Maiden Lane as a road becoming unpassable. Extensive work must be addressed as soon as possible in order to maintain safe travel for residents, as well as service vehicles. Public Works Department, working with the town engineers, will be drawing up a plan for road resurfacing, guardrails where necessary, road backfilling, and a turnaround at the north end of Maiden Lane. Funds available for this project could be available from the Town Road Improvement Account. A detailed report for this project will be presented at the May 5, 2015 Board of Select meeting. So if you haven't been on Maiden. This road is extremely bad. There are seven or eight houses there. More than that? 16? Oh, really? Okay. One of the issues we have, and Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to use one of the residents' driveways to turn a plow truck around. We essentially drive into his driveway, he gets a free plowing, and we drive back out. We had talked last year about making a cul-de-sac, but one of the residents at the other end, at that end of the road, was not happy with that and kind of blocked that, so. Yeah. So which, that's extremely important, but I mean, looking at the pictures, you can see the condition of the road is bad. It was not identified as an A, B, or C road in our road program, so we're going to have to look to address this in another way.
Do you know why?
I don't.
I thought this was in the third iteration.
It could be. I didn't think that it was.
The final, the six and a half million.
I don't have my. Oh, it could be.
I believe it will.
Very well be, but I don't know. But they're going to come up with an actionable plan for this. I don't think we have the money available to completely redo this road. Jim just threw out a number quickly of about $800,000 for just this road. Shaun had, just when we were talking before, mentioned a number around $2 million. Irregardless, that's a huge chunk of money, so we need to put a plan in place to determine how we're going to use that. And then we'll go from there. So that report will come on May 5th from Jim and Dennis, but I just wanted to put it on everybody's radar that this will be coming, so we can start to think about this. Also, just to recognize that this was brought up too by Public Works Board, that they have some concerns, so. some concerns, so.
Right, and we received a phone call over in the wintertime from a resident that he was not able to get heating oil because the driver could not, the truck could not get up good.
Oil trucks, ambulances have a problem, and fire trucks would really have an issue.
So it's something we're going to have to come up with a way to address. So, okay. Right, with that, we will move on to items number 12 and number 13. We're going to kind of do these, I'm going to do these together, if that's okay with you, Brian, because they're both connected. Item number 12 is the first quarter 2015 executive summary. This is the draft version. As you know, next Wednesday at 8:00, I will be presenting to the Strategic Planning Commission, doing the first quarter 2015 review with them. What we've done is we've taken, as you saw, the sample from 2014 fourth quarter, all of the quarterly reports from each department. Rory has gone through with myself and put these together in a little bit more of an executive summary. This is designed for two. Number one, for the selectmen, so you can look each quarter and just kind of see what's going on with different things, kind of a highlight of what's going on, and then if anything piques your interest, you can go back and look at the individual quarter of the reports. But more importantly, I'm going to use this as a part of my presentation to the 10-year strategic planning committee. I will review the executive summary from the quarter. At that point, and I know you don't have it in front of me, in front of yourselves, but this is the current 10-year strategic plan in its actual binder form. I've created a summary for myself with notes, things are color quoted, so I'm going to walk through with the 10-year strategic planning committee, step by step, all of their recommendations based on their priorities, and review each step. So I will use the two to present. By ordinance, that was created by this board, first selectman, the director of operations, and the finance director are required to make this presentation once a quarter, and the strategic planning commission can also call any other department head in that it deems necessary to answer any questions. So the anticipation is next Wednesday at 8:00, it'll be myself, Doug, and Tony. We will present this for the first time. As this is the first time we are presenting, there's no real set format. After that meeting, the commission will review what was presented and determine what the format will be going forward. But before, let's say Monday, if everybody could take a look at this executive summary, tell us what you like, tell us what you don't like, what changes you might want to see, and then we can incorporate those into what we present, or what I present going forward. Because I want to have the full board impact on this. Any questions, comments about 12 and 13? It's okay that I did both at the same time? Again, if anybody wants to look at these strategic plan, it's here. Once I've made my report on Wednesday night, Thursday morning, everything will be uploaded to a special section on the website where residents can go. They can not only see the strategic plan, but they'll be able to see my report as well as the executive summary report, and that will be backed up by all the individual reports as well. So those will be available to everybody. No one has any questions on that? We'll move on to item number 14, executive session, which we have no executive session this evening. Item number 15, which are appointments, we have many appointments tonight. First appointment, Steve Koulas, motor vehicle hearing officer. It's a reappointment, it's a two-year term, it expires 5/2/2017. Do you have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Paul, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion?
Yes, please, Dan.
Brian?
That is for parking tickets and things, right?
I understand it's a reappointment, but I just.
I think it's parking tickets and things like that if they want to appeal.
Have we ever had an appeal?
Not to my knowledge. Do you remember ever being appealed for parking ticket?
I'm sorry?
Do you ever remember appeal for a parking ticket or parking violation?
Usually they try to appeal it to the police department.
Yeah, that's generally what happens, they have the right to, the chief, and he either takes care of it or not.
I mean, I, I know it's something we're supposed to have, so.
Yeah.
As we have a place.
Yeah, I can't, I don't remember ever using it in 15 years, so.
Okay. No, that's a good question. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Rest of the appointments are for the local emergency planning committee. So we're going to start with Brian Anderson, a reappointment, it's a two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Do you have a motion to do so? Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Scott Andrews, local emergency planning committee, a reappointment, two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Ann Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes four zero one. Please note Len's abstention. Nicole Claris Dietria, local emergency planning committee. It's an appointment, it's a two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Do you have a motion to do so?
Second.
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes four zero one. Please note Nicole's abstention. Dale Khan, local emergency planning committee. It's a reappointment, two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Len, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Tom Amy, local emergency planning committee, a reappointment, two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Paul, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Ann Marie Dronus, local emergency planning committee, a reappointment, it's a two-year term, expires 4/21/2017.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes four zero one. Please denote Ann Marie's abstention. Kurt Miller, local emergency planning committee, it's a reappointment, oh, sorry, Kyle Kelly, local emergency planning committee, a reappointment, it's a two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Nicole, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Kurt Miller, local emergency planning committee, a reappointment, it's a two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion?
What if it ends in November?
I get to stay on the committee. So I got that bonus.
You see?
I can assure you, if that's the case, I will gladly step down and turn it over to someone else. Not a problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair abstains, motion passes four zero one. Dennis Rosum, local emergency planning committee, it's a reappointment, it's a two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Nicole, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Paul Sikowski, local emergency planning committee, reappointment, it's a two-year term, expires 4/21/2017.
Second.
Motion by Nicole, second by Paul. Is there any discussion?
Okay, Len, second.
It doesn't matter, it really doesn't matter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. John Cronin Jr., local emergency planning committee, it's a new appointment, two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Karen Spargo, local emergency planning committee, it's a reappointment, two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Nicole, second by Paul. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Mike Lombardi, local emergency planning committee, it's a new appointment, two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Tim Willis, local emergency planning committee, it's a reappointment, two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Paul Wedowitz, local emergency planning committee, a reappointment, two-year term, expires 4/21/2017. Motion by Paul, second by Len. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero.
It's the Paul's names that are, that threw me off. When he said Tom, I'm like, no, we just appointed Paul, right? You put in Paul, that threw me off.
Oh, okay. I'm glad that that is, that's the longest one ever. Okay, item number 16, tax refunds and abatements, Nicole.
Opposed to the tax collector, April 14, 2015, the following overpayments of tax payments in total of $800.21 need to be approved for refund in accordance with the provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes dated 14th day of April 2015, Dana Flock Tax Office.
Thank you, Nicole. Can I have a motion to accept the tax collector's April 4, 2015 report as presented?
Move.
Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? So everybody can review. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next item on the agenda is item number 17. We actually have, excuse me, two transfers in front of us. We will go with transfer control number 10 to start. That is Public Works Department, Dennis Rosum. He is requesting a transfer of $87,530.95. It will be coming from residential garbage line 425 and going to snow plowing overtime line 131, and under the detailed explanation, transfers for snow plowing overtime due to additional weekend storms. Attached is all of the necessary backup. I know that we don't ask for that much backup, but the Board of Finance does. This will go to them, assuming the Board of Finance accepts this transfer as well. We will bring it to town meeting as well because of the size, and we will go from there. Okay, so at that point, I'll entertain a motion to approve transfer item number, control number 10, excuse me, in the amount of $87,530.95 from residential garbage to snow plowing overtime.
Move.
Motion by Len, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Again, you know, I think this board should be very happy with the decisions that we made with regards to changing our garbage program over. We're seeing a direct positive impact immediately with those decisions. Okay, so if there's no other questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Next is control item number 11, and this is in the amount of $85,894.87. This is coming out of our labor contingency line, line number 874, and will be going as followed. Salary regular employees, Public Works, line 110, $67,734.87. Social Security, Public Works, line 220, $5,181.72. Retirement, Public Works, line 230, $8,128.18. Salary regular employees, transfer station, line 110, $4,053.57. Social Security, transfer station, line item 220, $310.10. Retirement, transfer station, line 230, $486.43. And again, this is to finalize the union contracts. This will pay all of the retro pay as well as put money to cover the remaining part of fiscal year 2015. This is substantially less than what we budgeted, so what's left, we can potentially allow to fall to the bottom line to go back into fund balance. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept control, or to approve, excuse me, control item number 11 for Public Works for the amount of $87,894.87. Motion by Nicole, second by Ann Marie. Just under discussion, this will go, assuming it's approved by the Board of Finance, this will go to town meeting as well. But again, we have this budgeted, so. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Item number 18 is correspondence. We have several correspondence. We have the check registers. We have a letter from town planner, Robert Looker, just informing us of the positive approval of the Section 824 referral for the high school athletic field, which was required. We have a copy of a letter from myself to our service chief, Scott Andrews, John Cronin, and then the captains of Great Hill and Citizens Engine, Chris Edwards and Ron Burgess, with regards to volunteer tax abatements and some of the requirements, making sure that all of our volunteer firemen are current on their taxes prior to May 15 to qualify for the abatement. We have an update on the prescription discount card from CCM. We have a letter, and not that this was unexpected, but a letter from DECD with regards to them withdrawing the $500,000 brownfield grant for Husatonic Wire. And then a letter from Seymour Pink thanking essentially everyone for the participation and the turnout at the wine tasting event, which, as you can see, raised close to $20,000 in profits for Seymour Pink. Okay, so with that, I'll close correspondence. Item number 19, public comment. State your name and address for the record.
I submitted a transfer, a transfer for the tub grinder, for the tub grinder, but it's not. I'm not sure.
Because only 11 was in the packet that was emailed, 10 wasn't in there.
Did we miss one?
So you're looking for nine.
Does the transfer for the tub grinder need to come in front of the selectmen? Is that in our department? It doesn't need to come in front of us. Yes. Yep. I mean, if, just double check that with Doug tomorrow? And we, maybe we can just add a quick Thursday night. Not a problem. Okay. Sean?
Yeah, because I've had you. I won't be there Thursday night, so we get back to the payment thing. The one question that's come up is past, and it was mentioned again tonight, was we do have a lot of time on these people. Just the thing with that is, collectors terms, we buy a car to either blow or it's a plug to the, to the, they, just because they're going to fix it later after we go legal rank on the bus meeting, and then we'll increase the hire. We want to go on the marathon, but they're actually going to do it not while we're going after them after. You know, I would do more to looking in and ask them what they have for experience with that. So, that. And the other thing is, Maiden Lane, that's been frustrating for years. Over the last couple of years, I have been down there to talk to residents, and we lose a dozen times multiple people. They're very talented people, and they're very reasonable. They came up with a meeting, and at the very end, hasn't been around Public Works and the garbage trucks and whoever's turned around in the driveway for a year, there's really no benefit of those things, they've, they're like, so, so, I make a reason we brought it to Portland, because the conversation hasn't started. But that being said, just in case the people that I've been making these promises for years are like, this, this has come up in the past, whether or not people remember enough conversations. This road has been brought up many times. When I was asked about the road program, the very first road I said, it was brought up, whether or not, why it didn't make the list was basically because it was far too expensive, a project to accomplish into what we had to look for, but we did bring it on that. So, I, I do blame it all to earlier, the $800,000 light. However, one option we may explore is doing exceptionally, whether or not we just do the first X amount of feet, then the second X amount of feet, when you have more money, for the worst part, but we have to do something, so. The number of the houses keep coming up, and I kind of consider that irrelevant. If there's one house on the road, that's one taxpayer that deserves the same services as the person that's going to make that.